I'd like to call the February 18th, 2025 Board of Education Budget Regular Meeting to order. If we could have a moment of silence. Flag salute. Flag is behind.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of the meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cablevision of Warwick and West Milford TV 77, and posted in the administrative building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Sutovich, Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mrs. Jergensen, Mr. Lippi.
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Here.
Mrs. Markward.
Here.
Mrs. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Mr. Greenough.
Superintendent's report, Dr. Kitchen.
Yes. So let me start with our required reporting out on our HIB for the first period of the year. So that goes July through January. So I did give you some of this information. Just so you're aware, we are in full compliance with all of the required programs and trainings that we are, that we need to do as a district and to go through some of our totals. So during this period, we have had eight HIB investigations initiated, all eight were in compliance with the 10-day period. That's across all schools. We had four of those, eight were affirmed at the Board of Ed level. We've had nine total trainings, school-level trainings. We've had 36 total school programs related to this curriculum across all schools, two district-wide trainings, and one total district program for HIBs during that period of time. So that includes different things like our GCN training, different things that are embedded in the PD offerings that Dan provides, and then again, the HIBs giving you the total for the district collectively. I prefer to do it that way mostly just because I don't want to try pitting schools against each other who's got more, but this is, everything we've done has been appropriately in compliance as it should be. So, any questions on that? All right. And up next, I did want to touch briefly on the virtual job fair. So I know I've spoken at the committee level about this, and we talked a little bit about the fact that because we are struggling to fill some of our positions, we have the goal of trying to find creative ways to recruit new teachers to our district when those positions become available. And one of the things that we talked about was the creation of a virtual job fair with the intent being not to only interview like a traditional job fair where you're interviewing for openings you have, but rather to interview for any opening or any position that someone may be credentialed for, with the intent of us gathering resumes from people that we would be interested in employing. So just an update on that, everything has been organized and is ready to be shared out. The next step on that is hopefully before the week is over, that information will be sent to all local colleges. So the goal is to try to recruit new and prospective teachers, and the form that has been created for that allows them to tell us what certifications they have and what positions they would like to interview for. Now, the benefit to the individuals that are applying to those positions beyond the prospect of a job possibility if there is an opening is also that we are then offering to provide feedback to those individuals on their resume and feedback to them on their interviews. So from the perspective of a college that is trying to encourage their soon-to-be teachers to get out there and interview and find jobs, for them to have a real interview with real actionable feedback and probably more direct feedback than you'd receive in a normal interview because, you know, we're not necessarily going into a lot of detail about why someone didn't get a job, but in this case, the jobs are theoretical. We're just giving you the interview. So the feedback we're providing you is just to help support these individuals in their quest to be employed. And hopefully, again, we start to collect some positive resumes. As we've discussed, the Personnel Committee on more than one occasion, we are not against cold calling people that we know are credentialed for the positions we're looking to hire for when we're having trouble filling the applicant pool. In this case, again, we just are hoping to end up with a stack of resumes that we can go reaching out to people when the job becomes available to say, hey, I don't know what your situation is, but, you know, did you find a job? Or even if you did, are you at all interested in sliding over to West Milford? So again, it's been organized, flyers been created, and the next step is for us to share that out with individuals. We are also, we're not doing it at a set time. It's going to be flexible scheduling based on the reply. So we have an admin council meeting on, I believe, Thursday this week, right? So we're going to talk, that's on my agenda to discuss with our admin team. Couple of them are here tonight, so you guys get to hear it firsthand. But the idea would be that we would, as we collect those resumes, we would, you know, at the convenience of the applicant, we would try to set up some of these interviews, and we would try to divide and conquer that a little bit. My anticipation is that as much as we're able to, and probably going to be a lot of that supported by Dan and I, but I'm sure that our admin team is going to have some people who may have some direct interest based on the roles. So we're going to try to lean on some of our other administrators to help support some of those interviews and provide some of that feedback. So really excited for it. It's something a little bit different, a little bit unique, that hopefully helps us to find, not only find good candidates, but also from budgetary perspective, this is definitely right up Mr. Schultz's alley, but hopefully we can find people also lower on the guide because we're trying to recruit people that we think are going to be strong right out of school, where they'd be coming in at step one, rather than someone who's been bouncing around for the past 10 or 15 years that are coming in at a higher step. So that's around with that. And then last but not least, I'm going to turn it over to Megan for our student report.
Good evening. Here is a debrief on all things West Milford from February. Starting off with a message for the seniors. On February 10th, mid-year GPA and final ranks have been updated on NABEons. Congratulations on your standings and keep up the good work. Also, be sure to check with your desired higher institutions to see if your updated information is required. If so, please contact your guidance counselor to learn how to proceed. West Milford High School celebrated the season of love with our recent Spirit Week. From February 10th to February 14th, we showed great school spirit and interpersonal appreciation. On Monday, we were tasked with writing love notes and hanging them up to create a heart wall. On Tuesday, we entered a fun scavenger hunt seeking out various depictions of hearts. On Wednesday, we wore pink to support the theater's department's upcoming production of Mean Girls, and because pink is very fetch. On Thursday, we took pictures in front of the heart wall that we created with the hashtag #WeHeartWMHS. And on Friday, we wore as many heart-themed items as possible. On February 13th, West Milford High School hosted College Panel Night, an event designed to provide our students and families with valuable insight into the college admissions process. We welcomed a panel of eight college admission professionals, some of whom are directors or deans of admission, who shared their experiences and expertise. While they represented their current institutions, many have worked at multiple colleges and provided well-rounded advice to guide students in their college planning journey. The panel featured representatives from both New Jersey and out-of-state schools, covering all three NCAA divisions, ensuring that students received a broad perspective on academics, admissions, and athletics. Students and parents were encouraged to ask questions, making the event interactive and informative. This event was an excellent opportunity for our community, and we are grateful to the admissions professionals who generously gave their time to support our students. We hope everyone had kept an ear out on Valentine's Day. On February 14th, the WMHS chorus went from class to class fulfilling their great amount of purchases as singing telegrams. Lovely music floated across the school all day, and all students could understand how much of a powerhouse our music program truly is. After listening to fantastic singing, West Milford High School was able to enjoy a variety of sweet treats as the GSA club held a bake sale after school in Miss Signorelli's room. This was a perfect time note to end Valentine's Day and our week of love on, even more so as all proceeds went to the Trooper Project, which is a great fundraiser. Now onto some sports news. Boys' basketball. West Milford High School fifth-seeded wins in 55-45 victory against 13th-seeded College Archive Patterson in first round of the Passaic County Tournament at home on February 8th. Senior guard Cole Stillman paves the way with career-high 28 points. The boys have record of 11-7. Girls' basketball. West Milford High School second-seeded wins in 40-27 victory against Paramus. Senior Laurel Space crushes the competition with 19 points, seven rebounds, four assists, and three steals. The girls now have a record of 13-3. Ice hockey. West Milford High School third-seeded edged out sixth-seeded Paramus 6-5 in overtime in the first round of the Big North Silver Cup on February 7th at the Ice Vault in Wayne. Kyle Gregory led the team with 21 goals and 28 assists. The boys' record is 8-12-1. Girls' wrestling. The jamboree competition was hosted at West Milford High School. Girls' wrestling began interest and sign-ups starting last year and now held a tournament to show interest, break into the circuit, and give more experience to the West Milford team. 150 girls from across New Jersey wrestling were in attendance. West Milford High School girls did very well with Jackie Sloan with the best record of 15-5. Indoor track. Ciara Clinton was third in the 1,600-meter run with a time of 5:30:65 and fifth in the 3,200-meter run with a time of 12:10:35. Mosmo Balastrieri was third on pole vault with effort of 10:6, and Tyler Meyer was fourth in high jump with a leap of 5:10. Lastly, here is a look into the future. February 21st. Club Photos and Senior Superlative Picture Day has been rescheduled from February 12th to this Friday, the 21st. Students, please make sure that you have properly signed up for clubs using our school registration to be allowed in the photos. Once you have done that, consult the updated schedule, don your proper club attire, and say cheese. Prepare your capes and notebooks. The Heroes and Cool Kids Program with the great assistance of the trusted sidekicks will fly to the elementary schools for their second visit on building character on the 24th. The Interact Club Cinderella Project is going to be on March 1st. Please consider helping our prances attend the ball. On March 1st, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., the Interact Club will be holding our annual Cinderella Project in the Lower Media Center of West Milford High School. We are collecting and selling gently-used semi-formal and formal dresses, as well as donated jewelry, handbags, and shoes. We sell these items for the greatly discounted prices of $5 to $20, and all proceeds go to purchasing low-income students prom bids. If you have any items that you would like to donate, we have boxes set up at the rec center, the library, West Milford High School Guidance, and the Holy Faith Lutheran Church. Please consider eating at the Wendy's Off-Route 23 North in Butler from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday, March 4th. The West Milford Class of 2025, which is the senior class, is partnered with Wendy's for a dine to donate. Meeting whenever someone eats from the selected restaurant in the given time period, 15% of profits go directly to the partnered club. This will assist the senior class in funding their prom, so please do consider dining. Lastly, calling all fun lovers. The Harlem Wizards are coming to town. On Saturday, March 8th, starting at 6:30 p.m., the Harlem Wizards will face off against the Highlanders starting at 6:30. It is sure to be a night full of laughs, awesome tricks, so please grab your tickets today at https://harlemwizards.com/schedule/tickets. Thank you for your time. I look forward to updating you next month. Please enjoy the rest of your evening.
Wonderful, as always. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Megan, that was excellent. That concludes my report. I do think we are going to jump real quick to our president's report, just because there's some relevant topics.
It's about you, Megan.
So just in case you were going to leave before our assistant superintendent's finished, we would just like to acknowledge and congratulate our own student representative, Megan Snigman, who recently represented West Milford High School, and I knew you probably weren't going to say this on your report, on February 7th at the regional competition for the Poetry Out Loud, where students must memorize and recite three poems. There were 17 schools represented, which included public, charter, and academies. Megan moved on to become one of the finalists, and we cannot be more proud of you.
Thank you.
Well done, Megan. And that concludes my president's report. Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Novak.
All right. We're going to have a presentation, so I don't know if the people sitting in this row want to adjust. Rob drops a screen.
It's going to be back here. Oh. Oh. That's probably the best idea you had.
Megan, roll your phones.
I did. My therapist wants to know about my relationship to work, by Tiana Clark. I did About Standing in Pity by Kimberly Glaser, and then I did Thoughtless Freezing by Paul Lamb.
Come sit by Dana.
No, I want, I want my phone. Because that's okay.
All right. We're all set, I think. All right. So tonight, we are presenting something that I've been talking about in a very, I guess, excited way for quite some time. And tonight is the part of the big reveal for something that we are calling Highlander Pathways. So I'm going to go through a series of slides, talk about what exactly Highlander Pathways are. When I met with staff and Mrs. Johnson from the guidance department, when we first launched this idea with them, we used the, you know, I heard people earlier talking about the USA/Canada hockey game. So the quote I used with the staff was, "Great moments are born from great opportunities." So that was a quote I used with the staff. It's a quote I like to carry through our discussion for pathways because it was, you know, the opportunity that we had came from something relatively unrelated to pathways, but it put us into the discussion of looking at how do we organize our coursework and move towards something called a pathway. That, two things happened. One, our computer science teachers at the high school won the award two years ago for having more female students have opportunities for taking advanced computer science courses than a large percentage of schools in the country. So we were very proud of that. Along with that process, we utilized some of that credential that we earned, and we applied for a computer science grant that was offered by New Jersey Department of Education. We won that grant. In that process of, you know, organizing the grant and the types of programs that we had to do with that, we were able to add some, add some more courses, add some more opportunities for students into our existing computer science program. So at the high school, we added cybersecurity. That was a complement to our already, our already robust offering of computer science courses. That also had AP courses, as well as Computer Science 1 and some programming. It also gave us the opportunity to offer computer science clubs at the middle school level. So, you know, with that, with that grant opportunity, it gave us this ability to look at, we now have this singular program that offers an opportunity for a student to enter our high school, have a series of computer science courses throughout their experience at the high school. Often, we, we talk about, sometimes we have our West Milford students who attend the Macabre School, and then they end up applying to or being accepted to high schools other than West Milford. Often, in that discussion, we, I'll use the word wine, because that's what I've done, and said, well, we have all the same things here. Well, we do. We have so many of the same opportunities here, we just don't have them organized in a way that some of these other facilities and high schools do. So that's the great moment that I'm talking about from that, from that great opportunity is now we've put that work in, we learned the background, we learned the know-how to organize something into what we call Highlander Pathways. College Career, I'm going to read at you a little bit. College Career Pathway is structured sequence of high school courses and experiences that prepare students for post-secondary education, workforce training, or specific career field. So that's a step that we've taken with the courses that we have. We've organized them in a way that provides students with a specific path, a specific career or college pathway that can either lead them to success in a particular workforce, or have a very competitive application for a college application, and have them stand out among their peers who are not going through those pathways. So a few bullet points for what makes a pathway. And later on, so I'm going to say, you know, guided course selection. When Mrs. Johnson takes the microphone, she's going to highlight the four pathways that we've identified for next school year, and she's going to show you exactly what those guided course selections are and what the offerings will be for each student in every year of their high school experience at West Milford. A College and Career Pathway also offers dual enrollment or AP courses. If you're unfamiliar with the term, dual enrollment means that while a student takes a course here at our high school, they're also earning credits for a, for a college-level course. So a student could take our AP Applied Computer Science here in West Milford, and then also earn three college credits that they can apply to a, to a post-secondary opportunity, you know, when they, when they earn those credits. The other, other opportunity you get from a College and Career Pathway is something called a CTE opportunity. That is how the state phrases the career and technical education programs. That has a very, very specific definition that I'll talk about a little bit later on. Another part of a pathway gives students opportunities to work with people in the field. So whether it's an internship, whether it's job shadowing, whether it is having a mentor from a specific field or a specific, a specific profession to come in and be part of that coursework or that pathway, those are the opportunities that we have to provide. And then last but not least, industry certification. So for the state of New Jersey, when we're talking about CTE college and technical education recognition, the term that I'll be, you'll be hearing me talk about a lot in the future is industry-recognized credential. So that is what industry certification is. For example, in our, and as Mrs. Johnson's going to show you later, when we highlight our computer science pathway, you will see that our students have the opportunity to earn industry-recognized credentials through Amazon, through Microsoft, through a couple of other, through a couple of other well-known, well-known companies in the field, that a student can earn that certification through completion of our, our program here, here in West Milford. Just a few, a few slides about how this, how this helps our student, student current, current student body. Highlander Pathways and CTE programs provide students industry-recognized credentials, hands-on experience, and readiness for higher education and the workforce. Something that is very important to us is the elevation of expectations for student rigor. One of the things that all schools have been battling since the pandemic is widespread apathy, chronic absenteeism, you know, the habit of being home and that transferring into students being hesitant to come to school, being hesitant to participate in extracurriculars and that sort of thing. So a lot of the research behind pathways, behind, behind a CTE program or having a specified coursework is that it encourages that desire to belong. So on the last bullet point there, I like to, I call the C, three Cs, encourages a capable, connected, and contributing student. And it, you know, has that same, I guess, feeling of being part of a team or a club. So if you're accepted or part of one of our pathways, that has a very, a very strong feeling of club or teamwork type of process. Provides intrinsic motivation for regular frequent attendance, all things that we're battling, just like all schools in New Jersey and beyond. And we feel that our pathways program is going to help and encourage that. Through our pathways, there's also a, and as Mrs. Johnson's going to mention later, there's a application process that comes with it. So students have to meet a certain set of criteria to be accepted into these pathways, and that's going to have, you know, there's, there's going to be value for your attendance. There's going to be value for your work habits. There's going to be value for your behavior. There's going to be value for your GPA. So those, those types of things. So it elevates the expectation of student rigor beyond the, you know, regular, you know, what a student brings to it, you know, coming from, coming from home. Expanding opportunities and being a, you know, providing competitive alternatives to specialized tech schools. So earlier, I mentioned that when we do lose a student from West Milford to a school that offers these types of programs, we now have a competitive, we have a competitive offering. That process, we believe, is going to launch this week or next week when we have our eighth-grade parent night. We are going to be presenting our pathways to eighth-grade parents for acceptance into these programs for next year. And we anticipate before, I guess, probably the November Thanksgiving time period next year, where students would be seeking these types of opportunities, where they're looking for pathways, where they're looking for CTE offerings, we're going to have not only the four programs that we're offering for next year, but the, an increasing opportunity for more pathways in our high school and be able to present that to parents as a choice. You know, if you are looking for a culinary arts pathway, if you're looking for a computer science pathway that gives students an industry-recognized credential, that gives them opportunity to people in the field, that gives students dual enrollment, access to those, access to those college credits, we're going to be able to offer that here in West Milford. So that, I believe, gives us a better competitive edge than we've had before. And this is a slide for, you know, I'm going to call it a song for another time. I'm not going to get too involved in this. However, when we take this steps for being identified as a school with a, with an official rank for college and technical education programs, if we get certified by the state to be a CTE district, that allows me to fill out the application for the Perkins Grant. Perkins Grant is something that I'll talk about a lot. I could spend a whole night talking about Perkins and the opportunities that brings, but it gives us another, another avenue for bringing in more funds to the district for our programs that are not from local taxes. And from this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Johnson. Before I turn, sorry. Before I turn Mr. Johnson, I just want to say that this has been a tremendous experience of teamwork. The people behind this, you know, myself, Mrs. Johnson, our supervisors at the high school, the staff members who teach these courses, coming together and just really talking through all the things that we offer was a, was a really, you know, I guess, a really exciting experience to see everybody working together in that regard.
Okay, so I'm going to head back to the why here because when we look at all those large ideas, a lot of the things that you saw on the slides in general about programs, there were so many things that were possible, but we still had to come back to, why are we going to do this for our students with the benefit to our Highlander high schoolers? So we talked about the fact that we want to help the highly motivated students be able to focus in on their specific areas of interest. We wanted to challenge them. We wanted them to challenge their style. We also wanted to be able to give them connected specialized courses that provided real-world, hands-on experiences that would support them when they go on to those next steps after high school. Initially, we wanted to make sure that we infused 21st century skills and competencies. Additionally, we wanted to make sure that we infuse 21st century skills and competencies and at the same time that we address students' aptitudes and or college and career readiness goals by helping them to get through the courses in an appropriate manner. Additionally, and this is a big one, we wanted to give students access to the courses that they need. Sometimes some of these courses are competitive to get into, but if we want it to be part of our program, part of our pathway, then we need to ensure that the students who are on the pathway have access. Additionally, we wanted to make sure that students get that connection between scheduling their courses and picking courses and how it will support them in a specific study. So it's a good practice for them to get that as they move on to the next stages. And finally, there were the credentials that we spoke about before and the certifications, as well as the dual enrollment and AP opportunities for our students. So once we identified the why, then we had to figure out how we were going to go about this. So. So Mr. Novak brought the concept to the content area supervisors, and we talked about all the things that we just showed you. And we started thinking, what's the possibility? And we had a rough idea as to what we wanted to do. At that point, I sat down with my school counselors who are really well-versed in getting the students ready for those next steps, the college and career counseling, as well as working with them on scheduling from year to year. They were able to point out some things that might be roadblocks or give us advice for which programs would be most beneficial. They helped us with the structures. They even vetted the application. So their, their input was really valuable to us making sure that this was a firm foundation. At the same time, content area supervisors spoke with the teachers who would be involved in this and asked them to dream, you know, what can we do for our students? How do we set them up for success on the next steps? And then finally, we took all of the groups, content areas, supervisors, school counselors, teachers, and we came together to develop this collaboratively. We had the four different pathways, and in every pathway, there was a representative from all of these different groups to ensure that A, we stayed on track, but B, we, we had a goal, we had, we had a focus that we wanted to accomplish within the pathway, and we had a format for getting it done. So this is what became then our Highlander Pathways. So the what? These are the pathways. The first pathway is our computer science pathway that Mr. Novak already mentioned. And this is what it'll look like next year for our freshman students coming in. In their freshman year, they will take computer science one and cybersecurity, or they can take AP computer science principles within the schedule that we currently have. All right, that would total eight periods with a lunch. In their 10th grade year, they could either continue with computer science and take the Java course, or they could take AP computer science principles if they hadn't already, or the computer program and cybersecurity. So they'll have options in the, the order in which they'd like to take them. In their junior year, they can build upon what they've taken or add something that they hadn't taken. For example, they could go on to Python, or they could go to AP computer science ag. In their seniors, where they start having room, in their senior year, technically, the only things they should need would be English, PE, and then we would always recommend that they continue with math. Some students would want to science and/or world language, or they'll continue with the electives. And the variety of electives would be anything they had not yet taken. Additionally, they, they could consider taking CAD, animation and video game design, or enter into the robotics program, taking robotics one and two. If they'd already taken some robotics, then they would add level three. Students could also choose to do the senior initiative. And the senior initiative is something that Mr. Novak mentioned earlier. Students would come in for a partial day. It would be four or five periods for a day, and the remainder of the day, they could participate in an internship, they could do college courses, or they could do an apprenticeship. So they could do any of those things, but it would be an organized, planned out, we have a whole application to the senior initiative process. And it, and it would be something that would build upon everything that they had done in the first three years. So through this pathway, the certifications are Amazon Web Design, Computer TIA SP, a Python certification, and Google Data Analytics certification. Right now, for this pathway, we do not have an official dual enrollment course, but we are working on that because one of our teachers has a master's, and we'd be able to get her to pull, pull together that program.
But we do have, one of the discussions for this pathway, through our mathematics, you know, often higher levels of computer science work hand-in-hand with higher levels of mathematics. We do have a dual enrollment calculus course that could fit into this pathway. We just, at this time, didn't identify it as the dual enrollment for this because we're working on having a more specific, I guess, targeted for a computer science course rather than it being the, the AP calculus.
Okay, the next pathway is the journalism and broadcasting pathway. And students coming in in their freshman year would take either TV Communication Arts one or Journalism and Modern Media one. And then in their sophomore year, they could continue with the course that they took in their freshman year, moving on to the level two, or they could take the opposite course. If they took TV COM in their first year, they could take Journalism and Modern Media in their second year. And those two courses really play hand-in-hand together. It will likely be recommended to all students that they take at least one in the other area. If they really wanted to do journalism, they would be advised to take at least one course in TV COM, or the reverse. If they take TV COM for three or four years, they'd be advised to take one journalism course. In their junior year, they can expand further. They can continue in level three of the first courses, or they could take Art One, Graphic Arts One, or, or anything within the arts. Like you will see where the world language is. Sometimes juniors will drop the world language if they're not going to the most competitive schools. I hate saying that as a world language supervisor. However, that is a possibility, and then they could pick up another art elective in that manner. In their senior year, again, continue with journalism and TV COM. We would also recommend that they pick up marketing because that's an important skill for students in those fields to have. And again, the senior initiative is an option. The certifications would be Adobe Premier, Adobe Systems Certification, and also InDesign, which is another Adobe course. And the dual enrollment options, Journalism Three and Four are already dual enrollment courses, and Broadcast News is something that we were going to be applying for dual enrollment for as well. So by the time the students get to that point, that will be a dual enrollment course. And the last pathway is Visual and Graphic Arts. And for the Visual and Graphic Arts pathway, the students would start with Graphic Arts One or Studio Art One. In their sophomore year, they would go to Graphic Arts Two, or they would begin Digital Art. In their junior year, Graphic Arts Three or Digital Art Two. And again, with the world language, they could pick up one of those art electives and take two in their junior year. And in their senior year, they can branch out into the areas of interest that meet their goals, video game design or animation, marketing, Photo One and Photo Two, and any of the courses not previously taken. So the certifications are Adobe Illustrator, Adobe Photoshop, and Adobe InDesign. And the dual enrollment course at this point in time is Digital Art Two. And the final pathway is our educator preparation pathway. Students in grade nine will take Philosophy and Literature for their English class. However, if they are in the honors program, they would, can take the honors nine English class. And they will also take an art course, either Studio One or Basic Art World Class, with an eye on the things that teachers often have to do with in their classroom, whether it's creating bulletin boards or anything like that. It's always a good thing for a teacher to have. Grade 10, it would be an Intro to Behavioral Science and/or Foundations of Education. That course will be in development next year. Grade 11, we would suggest that students take Lunch and Piano, that is a half lunch, half piano course. We would also require them to take Child Development because Child Development is the gateway, if students do well, and, and there's an interview process and everything else, for the senior program, which is tomorrow's Teachers. So tomorrow's Teachers in the senior year is a two-period course. We'd also have the students taking AP Psychology. We'd suggest the Guitar Lunch, and we would also have them take Statistics for data collection, things like that, that teachers are often astrodoped. The certifications would be CPR and First Aid, and there would also be an Early Childhood Care Certification. And the dual enrollment is tomorrow's Teachers.
I'll just jump in quickly before we go to the, the final slide. So although through the program, we've identified one or two courses for dual enrollment in each pathway, those are pathway-specific courses. That does not mean a student could graduate with far beyond the amount of credits that are offered in just a pathway course. So those, those are the processes that, that are going to play out with our counselors as we talk to the eighth grade parent group. If you're a student who wants to be part of a pathway and also wants to be, you know, on that competitive college track, you're going to be looking for AP opportunities and other courses. So we have, we have 25 approved AP courses in our, in our high school curriculum. We have, you know, in, you know, in all subject areas, we have the opportunity to collect. So a student could potentially graduate West Milford High School with, you know, 25, 30 college credits if they are that, on that ambitious path. If they're in a path, pathway where they're also taking the AP Bio, the, you know, AP Statistics and English and those, and those types of things. So this is just the beginning of this discussion, and it's going to evolve over time as we, as we enter kids into these pathways.
Okay, so our next step. The first thing is going to be a data collection from U Science. U Science was a program that was brought into the middle school this year. It is aptitude and interest testing, or I shouldn't say testing, it's modules that the students complete. And via the responses on the modules, it indicates the aptitudes or skills that a child possesses, as well as the interests that they have expressed, and it connects them to career pathways. So the school counselors at MACABINN are gathering that data, and that data will be used to encourage students who are showing an aptitude or an interest in any of the four pathways that we have developed thus far. The grade eight parent scheduling presentation that Mr. Novak mentioned earlier is where we're going to unroll this, roll this out. The folders that I gave you are the types of folders that we're going to hand out that night so that every parent who attends will have all the information that they need. The brochures are individual for each pathway. There's a cover sheet or a general information sheet if they just want the, the quick information. And there's also the application inside that folder so that the students and the parents can see, you know, what are the structures, what are our expectations for students now, as well as what are, what are the structures as they continue within the program. Part of that application, as Mr. Novak mentioned, is that we, we want to see consistent academic work in MACABINN. We also need to see consistent attendance because if we truly want a child engaged in the pathway from beginning to end, we need them focused on being in school and, and doing as best they can. So that's part of the application. There's an essay that's part of the application. There's a teacher recommendation part of the application, as well as a review of records that would be completed by the MACABINN school counselor. So when a student decides to apply, those applications will be due around the beginning of April, April 4th is on the application. And then those materials will come to a selection committee. There'll be a different selection committee for each of the pathways because the supervisor and the teachers who are heading up the pathway should be the people who are reviewing the materials for the application. Then the students who will become our first cohort will be notified that they've been accepted into the pathway. So as Mr. Novak said, this is a great opportunity for our students, and it's something that we're hoping that, that this is our beginning and will continue to grow in so that our kids can stay here and, and gain the exposure that they needed more. There is one thing I'm going to add to this that I, we brought it to put in there, and you can see it on the application sheet. There is a requirement that students stay in the pathway for two years because we want them to have some exposure. We want them to take a couple of courses and make an educated decision about it. If they choose to remove themselves from the pathway, the courses in the first and second year will often need a practical art and/or a visual art. At the very least, they'll still be the open annual credit that a child would need for graduation. So there's no harm in your file if they enter a pathway and then change their mind. All right, so we would ask two-year commitment so that they have exposure to at least two, if not three, courses.
I think this is fantastic, and thank you so much. My only question that I have is how we're going to make sure that our special needs population is able to apply for the, and, and be accepted. I, I understand the, the standards and what we're looking to do. I just want to make sure that we're providing opportunities for all of our students.
So I don't, I don't think our, our application process distinguishes between gen ed or, or special education. I think when our students meet with their, you know, meet with their counselor, have opportunity to, you know, talk to their parents, that everyone can apply for the program. I think the discussion, you know, would, would, you know, when it comes to special education, would go through their case manager and determine if it meets their needs. What we currently have in district, I think the only pathways we do currently have are for special education students. I know we, we, we talk an awful lot about some of our out-of-district placements, you know, for specific career pathways. So I think we already do a great job with, with how we are servicing our, our special education population, and I don't see the pathways diminishing that in any way. I think it only enhancing it and probably offering us more opportunity to try and keep some of that here in West Milford. So, so that's a great question, and, you know, but those are discussions that we've had. Dr. Ressa and I have been, you know, having those conversations along the way and, and specifically for some of those programs where, you know, where we see that we are sending students out of district, you know, how do we, as we build out this program, how do we offer more opportunities for students who are, you know, in some of those very specialized settings to, to do that here in, here in West Milford?
Thank you. I know, we, in the past, we've talked about block schedule. And I noticed in the format that you've presented, there are eight-period days. How are you going to adjust this program to a block schedule if that happens?
So if you look on the chart, there's an open line on the bottom of almost every chart, and we've over, like, we have several courses listed that not all students will be able to take every course as it's mapped out realistically and maintain, say, a world language for four years for a competitive school or things like that. If we get the opportunity to have eight academic classes in a day, we will be able to fill that easily enough. We, we probably can get a little bit more creative with our electives.
But supposing we're not going to have an eight-period day, supposing it's going to be like an AB or BB schedule, how does this program fit into that kind of scheduling?
I don't know. So I, I've asked, you know, you just, you know, tell them what I've asked you to do multiple times. So I've asked, I've been asking Karen to create fictitious schedules, wasting all of her time for many months, right? I apologize for this, but great question because now it's valid. So she spent a lot of time, like, proposing, what if, what if, you know, what if we had a block schedule? What if we had a nine-period day? How do these things look? And we believe that we can do this no matter what schedule we put in front of our staff. This works regardless of the schedule that we have. It works better in some ways for other, with other things. That's, again, that's a discussion for another time, but we know right now that the current eight-period day, that this will work. We know that it will work in a nine-period day, and we know that it will work in the traditional block schedules that, that some of our, you know, when our high school committees were, were looking at it. And that was discussions, you know, that was a, when I first, when we first had the meeting with staff, when, you know, great moments are born from great opportunity, everyone in, in that room was like, well, what does this mean? What kind of schedule are you forcing on us here? And it was not really, that's not what this was about. This was about the pathway discussion, and then how do we allow this to move forward regardless of all these other balls we have up in the air that, that may or may not be undecided for next year or the year beyond? So to, you know, long story short, is we can do this with any schedule that we, any schedule that we offer.
PCTI utilizes people who are not certified teachers, but they're experts in their fields. Will we be doing the same thing here?
So I guess it depends on what your question is asking. Are we asking for people who are uncertified to teach the courses? No, we have to provide certified staff members to teach these courses. However, in part of that, let's see how far back I can click. Part of the career and technical education opportunity that I said I would describe at a later date would, let me see how far I can click. Here we go. Hands-on experiences and internships, enhanced college applications and resumes, industry-recognized credentials. Hold on, let me go there. Work-based opportunities for internships, apprenticeships, or job shadowing. So that is where this process leads to. Our students have an access to people who are professionals in the field, experts in the field. So we have, like, I know we have, I've spoken personally with a community member who is dying to work with us for computer science because it's someone who had students who went through these schools. It's somebody who volunteered their time during the pandemic to do a network engineering Zoom when our kids were home and the schools were closed. Like, we have people in our community that are dying to come in and support. And to this point, we haven't had an opportunity really to capitalize on it because it's more of a, in the current structure, it's more of a guest speaker who comes to the room, which is great. But in this process, it creates a structured process where they are scheduled with a specific task in mind for why are they meeting with this professional? And what type of internship or apprenticeship are they accomplishing? And that's something that I have to ensure when I apply through the state to make this a bona fide CTE program. Is that we have to really identify who those people are and what specifically are they going to be doing with our students?
Thank you.
This is tremendous, and I'm so excited for the students of West Milford to have this opportunity. How many students are you anticipating in each pathway?
So, I don't know if you want to answer. It's going to be program-specific. So we don't really anticipate capping the certain blanket number for each pathway. It's going to come down to one. It's going to come down to how many applications we get for a particular pathway. You know, one path could be significantly more popular than the others. We really don't know until we put this out to the community. But we do know we're very cognizant of making sure that students who aren't part of the pathways have opportunity to take all of these electives without being part of it.
So that was going to be my follow-up question. Yeah, so like, let's say, like, I know seniors get priority if they wanted to take computer science one, they could. But the kids in the pathway would have priorities.
So the pathway student will have priority to these pathway courses. However, that was something that was very important in our discussion, with all of us, administrators, staff members, everyone in the discussion. Because that's what makes, I think, what makes West Milford who we are is that we have all of these unique opportunities, comprehensive high schools. So when we eventually identify auto shop as one of our paths, which we are going to do, we still want to make sure that every kid who wants to take auto has that opportunity without having it to be your pathway and you have to take it every single year. So we are going to be very careful with the numbers and making sure that we don't flood a particular pathway so that our students who want to have all those different opportunities can still have them. So like you said, that's going to be one of those guided view. Sorry.
Yeah, I'll give you an example of it because it's something we already spoke about. When it comes to the tomorrow's teachers pathway, we looked at the fact that, well, the educator preparation pathway, right? They go to tomorrow's teachers. That's a very small cohort of students that has to do because they need to match up one-on-one with the kids. So our number is generally around 14, max 15 for that program. We can't take 15 kids into the cohort and then say, if you're not in the pathway, you can't participate. So that's a program that we're going to have to be careful about limiting our numbers with in there. And that discussion comes from the applications and from what the teacher feels is important to her class at that point in time. Once we see how it goes, we can adjust that number. In the other pathways, it's not quite as limiting at this point in time. But again, it's something else we need to look at from the guidance perspective in terms of scheduling. So that we don't keep anyone out of a course that they really want to get in.
I'm sorry. I may have missed something. Are you planning on instituting this pathway in September?
Yes.
Is it part of our budget?
What's that about money? So you're going to love this. This doesn't cost us any more money. We have it all.
Okay.
We have it all. And I'm kind of lying a little bit. So I've been able to leverage the, begin with, you know, great moments, great opportunity. The computer science grant allowed us to build out the computer science part of this because there's a lot of programmable devices that are expensive that we didn't have here in district that we are now going to be able to purchase through the grant. So the grant was money that we won. It was $26,000?
$22,000, I believe.
Okay. Twenty-two thousand dollars that we were...
Do we have to reapply for that grant every year?
That was only a one-time thing. So that, but we are using it for one-time expenses. So programmable devices are things that are going to be here and be part of our programs. It didn't cost us any money to create the cybersecurity course. Other than curriculum development and curriculum writing, which was also included in the grant. We just applied, we submitted the application last week for the state's esports grant. And that's a conversation we'll have at another time. But a number of these pathways, especially computer science and broadcasting and journalism, directly relate to this topic called esports and all of the different things that come from it. So we submitted a grant for the state for $50,000. So if we win it, great. If we don't win it, we'll find a way. So currently in this structure, this is not going to cost us. We're not recommending adding staff for this. We're not recommending anything other than support and smiles.
Very good. Thank you.
Good. Any other questions?
Karen read my mind. But I guess, how are you going forward now? Because this is for September. How are we planning ahead with the students at Macapin? Yeah, there's going to be some information, there's going to be an information night and...
Yes, the last slide talked a little bit about some of our next steps. So is it Monday night, the listening date on Monday?
Monday the 24th.
Monday the 24th. We are going to have our eighth grade parent night. That is going to be our opportunity to reveal this to the eighth grade parents and share this with everybody who's looking to schedule for next year. Every parent's going to get a folder like you're holding. We see this as also being part of the new, when we transition to the new website, that we are going to have a very vivid and centralized view for what these programs are. We're going to have a pathways link on our homepage so that you can scroll down and click pathways and then see all these things that we have. Be able to see, going back to what we just showed, you'll be able to see on one page on the website this. So if I'm a parent and student who's interested in teaching as a profession, well, I get to look at this as an eighth grade parent and see, well, okay. If I want to pursue teaching in a college program, then this is going to help prepare me to be a very viable candidate for that next level. We're going to provide certifications, CPR, first aid, the early childhood care certification. One thing I didn't mention, and I don't think they want me to mention it, but I'm going to do it anyway. If you are a student who turns 18 in your senior year and you've been one of those students who are on course for that high academic process and you earn a certain amount of credit, dual enrollment credits, as a high school student, you can get your substitute certificate at the end of this program. If you're 18 and you've completed a certain amount of credits and the state keeps changing that, right now it's 30, and we're going to have those opportunities for people to earn those credits. So how cool is that, that we can have our seniors to go on and do that? It's probably, you know, it sounds great. It's probably a very small percentage of kids who'll be able to earn that many credits at this point in time in our current structure. But that would be a great thing. But yes, so going back to your question, every eighth grade parent is going to have this view of what these pathways mean, what our students are going to predict their classes will be, what certificates we expect them to come out of high school with, what college credits they'll come out with. So it's, I think it's very different than what we've been able to do in the past. We've always talked about our dual enrollments. We've always talked about our AP classes, our honors opportunities. But this is to be able to show, to give that four-year view down the road. What will it look like if you graduate from West Milford High School having been part of one of these pathways or CTE programs? And that discussion is only going to grow. So this year, we're going to be presenting it to eighth grade parents and beyond. We had a great discussion today during our PD day with all the people involved in esports production, broadcasting, computer science, robotics, et cetera, about what we're doing this year for digital citizenship night and how we're going to invite a much larger audience. And we're going to show a number of our pathways in that type of event. So the more we bring this discussion down to our fifth, sixth, and seventh grade parents, when they get to eighth grade, this isn't a surprise. This year, it's a surprise. We've never done it before. We anticipate that not this coming September, and we think it'll be successful this coming September. We believe that in the following year that we'll be able to come here and say that we've been able to keep more West Milford students here because of these programs than we have in the past. Because now here's an offering that we can line it side by side with what other places offer. And here's the industry-recognized credential. Here's the dual enrollments. Here's the apprenticeship with a professional that you can expect here in West Milford. So the advertising is going to just be onslaught. Website, school messenger, parent events, community engagement events that were funded by grants, not local.
So you'd be able to give us, not publicly maybe, but some kind of feedback after Monday night, how it was received to the parents? Because that would probably help us a lot to know, like, the interest and how. I'm very excited about it. I think this is a great program. Looking at it, I see, this is a very limited number of students that we're talking about. So my just concern is when I look and see no elective for, like, no ban, do you know what I'm trying to say? And again, this is a very focused group of students that are looking for something else, and I get it. So that's my only concern.
As of now, you have these three pathways?
Four.
Four, sorry, four pathways. And you are looking forward to additional, you had mentioned auto shop and things like that. Are they going to roll out this first year as well? Are they going to be down this September?
So for September, it's just going to be these four. You know, we wanted to start in a, I guess, in a tangible way with the programs that we identified as having most of the components in place that we need. Because I'm also interested in being able to apply for that Perkins Grant opportunity. So these programs are the ones we identified as being able to meet the criteria for an official CTE program this year with the process that we're following, with the coursework that we have. And then going forward, we learn from that process and then we build out. We all know that auto shop and our, you know, we call them our technology education courses. They used to be called our industrial arts courses. That's a huge opportunity for us to provide those CTE offerings. And coming back to Mrs. Marquard's question about making sure that our Special Education population is taken care of in that as well. That's traditionally some of the types of programs that we're sending students out of district for. So the sooner that we can turn our technology ed courses into a CTE pathway, the better it is for all of our students, not just this student who might be looking for the advanced computer science avenue.
So with that being said, when we have students who are going to other high schools, are the programs that they're going to other high schools for driving the pathways that we're doing? So in other words, when we have X amount of kids who are going to PCTI, are we looking at what programs they're being accepted into, what programs they're applying to at PCTI and letting that drive our pathways to keep them in district? I'm trying to figure out how we're driving them.
That's a great question. I believe, sorry if you want to jump in. I'll just try and answer it, and then you can. No, you go. I'm hot.
So that is one thing that over the past couple of years I've been looking at. Because we do keep a list of students who decide to go. And it's an odd thing. Every year, it tends to change, right? Some years, it is really the high academic programs. And other years, it's more technical in nature. Students going for the auto shop or the wood shop or the welding, things like that. So it kind of does this and changes, you know? You can't predict that it's always one type of program. It changes year to year.
But you're looking at the averages, right? Because just for an example, if we have a ton of kids applying to the construction technology program at PCTI, for example, which tends to be a very popular program of kids from our district going there, are we looking, I realize that it changes from year to year, but how are we tracking it and looking at averages to make sure that we're creating these pathways to keep them in district?
So you can answer that part in a minute. But the first part of your question was, how did we select? So very simply, we selected these programs based on the certificates of the people that we have in place and the offerings that we have that are, we believe, to be the most complete. So we have work to do in other pathways to be able to get there and to be able to challenge some of those higher, you know, some of those more popular programs in other places. We started with where our in-house capacity and our in-house expertise is, and that's where we started. And I think, you know, in this past couple of years, we've talked about, you know, Dr. Kisson's done a lot of work with trying to fill difficult-to-fill positions. We've had some issues with some of our building trades types courses and the staff members that we've been trying to get. So we have the pieces in place now. It's just a matter of being able to capitalize on those going forward. So very simply, we started with what we had, and we look to build on that going out. And that's where the data that Karen Johnson and team will, where that will play in.
Yeah, and I would add simply too that we did also look at a lot of other districts and their programs and what did they offer and what was included in those programs so that we could make sure that we were competitive, if not a little bit ahead of the game on that. And the AP, no, the AP, the dual enrollment was an important piece. But most schools want the teacher to have a master's. So that's where it becomes tricky. And auto, for example, when Colleen Weiss-Majestic was here, she had an agreement with the State County Community College for auto. But then when we didn't get the paperwork, we went back. So many people have changed there that no one was willing to say, well, yeah, we can see an email where you had the agreement, but now it still don't happen. So we need to get that back up and running. But we knew that there were certain ones we could get in place right now.
All right. We'll be filling you in as we go. A lot more to hear about this. And then we'll report out on how the eighth grade parent night went going forward. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Johnson.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It's okay. Just got to make sure that Philly go first next time.
Next year, Bill, I'll, I'll earmark it. Please put these first.
No.
No, absolutely not. You're gonna sit here and you're gonna enjoy it.
If I could just speak real quick, I want to again thank Dan for all the effort that he put into this. I mean, this was something that really, this conversation just started a couple of months ago, and Dan put a lot of effort into, you know, moving in this direction in a very short period of time. And then Nora Schwedt has been left the room already, but, but Karen Johnson, she is such a workhorse with these things. I don't get many opportunities to, to really praise her. We get plenty of opportunities to talk about how great Dan is and all the efforts that he puts in. But I think that, that, you know, Karen was, was not the trigger for this, right? Dan brings this forward and says this is something we want to do, and you can see the amount of time that she's put into just jumping right on that. And it just speaks to what a team player she is and all the effort that she, that she puts in. So really, really, a lot has gone into this, and it's, it's really something that's very exciting.
Taking it up for good time. Thank you. Should say thank everyone else though, too.
Thank you, Mr. Nova.
Nice job.
I mean, the supervisors and the staff and, and, you know, the admin team at the high school, that, that meeting we had was, I forget who was in the office. Like, I came back like, wow, that's, I may have talked to you. I may have said to, you know, wow, that was one of the best meetings I've ever had, you know, in my time here. And it was just, everybody was all in on, on this discussion, asking great questions and, you know, looking to really move everything forward. So it was one of those real, real fun and exciting moments.
No, great presentation. Thank you.
Very good.
And special reports and correspondence, Mr. Schultz.
We have Matt Wilcox from Wilcox and Company, who's now an expert on the CTE programs. He's here, he's here to present this to our audit that just concluded early, you know, it is 6:30.
Mine's only 43 minutes, not 45 minutes. So. Do I get a microphone?
Yes.
All right.
I will say that, can you hear me? High school has changed a lot in the last 20 years. Seems like a really cool, cool program. And, and something I just wanted to go on with that is, is the more you have programs like this, the more attractive of a grantee you become. And you'd be surprised how many grants aren't out there that you don't know about. And if you get creative, these programs could actually have, bring more money, rather than going against the budget and costing of money. So.
Good job.
Yeah. Very, very cool. So my name is Matt Wilcox. I am the board auditor. Just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. Thank you to the superintendent, Mr. Schultz, the entire administrative staff. If I could turn your attention to the last page in the small book, that will be the finding and recommendations, and you will see there are none. So that pretty much sums that one up.
Yay.
Yeah, but in reality, my firm does a very, very, very detailed audit. I have been to about 12 of these so far this year. I think you're the second district that hasn't had any comments, and that's really not the norm. So I think we, you know, we're very happy that Mr. Schultz and his team, you guys are in good hands. So other than that, from a compliance standpoint, I know one of the board members likes to ask some questions about excess surplus.
Oh.
So, so listen, you know, there's a schedule in the audit called the C1. It basically is a budget to actual. The district did have a good year. We did, fund balance did go down, our reserves did go down, and our excess surplus went down. But that is what those things are there for, right? We transferred a lot of money. We, we did spend some money in, in capital reserve. We spent some money in required maintenance. And I'm assuming that we are going to replenish those throughout the year and towards year end. But the reality of those balances are, they're there to be used, right? We reserve money in case something comes up. And I'm sure something did come up, which is why we spent $850, $6,000 this year and $150 out of, out of here. And, and really, that's what those reserves are for. But I will say, in, in relation to your fund balance, your reserves are still very healthy, which is great. As far as the excess surplus, it did go down from last year, but in a perfect world, right, we wouldn't have any excess surplus. Our budgets, revenues would equal our expenditures, and, and there wouldn't be any need for excess surplus. So what excess surplus is, is there's a calculation based on a state law that says we're not supposed to have more than 2% of surplus, because then, in theory, we are taking too much money to run our operations. I believe the excess surplus this year was 3.1 that we use in the following year as budgeted revenue, when last year it was 3.4. So still, you know, we're generating a lot of surplus, a good amount. We have a healthy fund balance, which is really what's most important. And we have monies on hand just in case something happens, right? We have the ability to fix something if we have to, you know, fix an HVAC, or, you know, fix a roof panel, or do something like that. So, so I think you're in good hands. It seems that we had a good operating year, and, yeah, the results were strong. So that's really all I have for my presentation. No comments, strong financial position. That's, that's really the point I wanted to get at from this. Are there any questions?
Thank you, and sorry we didn't have you go first.
That was a surprise.
All right.
You made your own money.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
I'm not charging out for that.
Good thing.
All right, well, see you next year.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Matt.
Have a great day.
Claire?
I, I just want to comment on, and say congratulations to Billy and his team. Having no comments is amazing. Through the years, there has always been one or two, maybe three. To have two, to, to have no comments, again, is just great. And I think you, kudos to you and also to the team in the, in the board office. I want to say thank you. I know that the auditors are with us, and I'm sure they left today, and they'll be back in five weeks.
They'll be back in 40 hours.
So, I, you know, I, I, but you need to let, you need to let everyone in the board office know that we are very thankful for what they've done.
Well, yeah, and I like to.
Their hard work. It is hard work.
I'd like to thank everyone in the board office, everyone, even in schools, to student activities, Derek's department, the local IPs, transportation, pretty much every department is in that audit. It's really comprehensive. So whole district's involved, and everyone really worked hard on it. So I was really happy to find out we had no comments.
Mr. Schultz's background as an auditor is really invaluable in a situation like this, because he knows exactly what it is we're supposed to be doing, and exactly what questions they're going to have, because he lived this on the other side. So I know we talked about it at committee, but I, I just want to echo, it really is a very big deal. District this size always has some sort of funding, even if it's something relatively minor. So to have nothing, it just shows, he's doing everything in his power to make sure we are fully above board, we are compliant. So excellent job.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Sotovic.
I saved it for you guys.
You waited for it.
So realistically, when I was first on the board, you get this book, and you're like, what the heck do I really do with it? And there are several pages that I like to draw everybody's attention to, in case you're not staying up late looking at this thing. Pages two through the beginning of four up to point number four, internal accounting controls, aside from point number four, which is just, you know, an informational section that's just generalized. One, two, and three really give a nice outlook on key points for our district, such as our enrollment, the economic condition, gives you a nice outlook of what the town is and where it's going. Basically, the census data and what track we're headed in, and then the major initiatives of the district, which I'm sure Mr. Schultz and his team had to put together for this. It really gives a nice outlook as to what our major goals are. If we turn page 100, we have the roof bond. That way you're familiar with.
Right.
Right, exactly. What? We did that. So when we look at that, we can see that we have debt that's retiring in 2029 for this. And at the time, we got a great rate of 2%. So kudos to Ms. Francisco at the time for arranging that and moving forward with the board team that really was encouraging of taking that route and saving the district money in return by getting funding back from the state in order to support that. And that's important to look at, because in the future, when that debt expires, there are other things that we're going to engage in as a board, and we have to consider that down the line. 101 is a similar page with leases that we have, and we can see that some of our leases, especially for buses that we're acquiring nowadays, have a 7% and up interest rate. And that is definitely something that we need to take notice of if we continue down the lease purchase route. 111 is the corporate sponsors page, we'll call it, of the highest taxpayers in the township. And it's something that I think is important to just kind of recognize, that these principal taxpayers are the biggest reason. Of course, our general tax base is a huge part of it, but these larger business type of taxpayers and ratables are significant to what support the district. So when we do raise the tax levy for the general residential tax base, those commercial tax bases are getting hit at an even larger rate. So it's always something to be cognizant of. And that was it for my little spiel for this year. Till next year, right?
Thank you, Mrs. Sotovic. Mr. Schultz?
Yep.
Continuing, right?
Same.
I also have the, the minutes for the January 21st, 2025 workshop ethics special action meeting, and the January 28th budget regular meeting, and the January 28th executive session minutes.
I move to approve the January 21st workshop ethics special action meeting, January 28th budget regular meeting, and January 28th executive session meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
I have to abstain from January 21st. I was not here.
Okay.
We missed you.
I know you did. In town.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I don't know, sorry. I blew your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
You're welcome.
I did my president's report already with Megan. So public comments, is there anyone wishing to speak?
Move to close public comments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Three.
Any changes to the agenda, Dr. Kitchin?
So the agenda, as it is listed in front of you, should be accurate. There is something on 16, which was a, an acceptance of a separation agreement. That has been removed from the agenda. If it's still visible on your page, if you refresh, it won't be anymore. So that has been taken off the agenda for vote. The reason it's been taken off is we don't have a signed agreement yet. So we can't vote on it.
Good reason.
Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Education, Mr. Sotovic.
I'd like to move items 12.2 to 12.6 under education.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it'd be appropriate to read the music in our schools and youth art month resolutions.
So for music in our schools month resolution, the proclamation is, whereas the study of music contributes to young people's development through heightened skills in listening, reading, self-expression, creativity, and whereas music education in the schools includes a broad range of types of music and active musical experiences, and whereas music and the other arts significantly enhance the morale and quality of the school environment, and whereas it is stated objectives, it is the stated objective of the public school to prepare children for a productive role in our society, and whereas the National Association of Music Education has designated March as Music in Our Schools Month, focusing on the theme unity through arts. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of West Milford Township endorses the observance of Music in Our Schools Month as an opportunity to support the purposes and practices of music education, and encourages teachers, parents, students, and all citizens to participate. The Board of Education of the West Milford School District, for its own part, rededicates itself to the maintenance of a music education program that will be relevant to the needs of the children placed in its care, and will reach and positively influence each child, and that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the public meeting of the West Milford Board of Education held on February 18, 2025. And obviously, that's a huge part of what makes West Milford, West Milford. So it is very encouraging that each and every year, we once again re-contribute ourselves to that purpose. And then youth art month. Whereas art education contributes powerful educational benefits to all elementary and secondary school students, including the following. Art education develops students' creative problem solving and critical thinking skills, abilities. Our education teaches sensitivity to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities. Our education gives students deeper understanding of world cultures, values, and beliefs. Our education reinforces and brings to life what students learn in other subjects. And art education integrates student learning in art production, art history, art criticism, aesthetics, philosophy, and whereas our national leaders have acknowledged the necessity of including arts experiences in all students' education. Therefore, be it resolved that support should be given to art educators as they attempt to strengthen art education in their schools and communities. Now therefore, it is proclaimed that March be observed as Youth Art Month, focusing on the theme unity through arts in the schools of the West Milford Township School District, and that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the public meeting of the West Milford Board of Education held on February 18, 2025. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Sotovic. Any discussion? Okay, scene, roll call please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Sotovic?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Rokano?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
And 12.7 will be after executive session.
Oh, we actually, no, we actually, yeah.
Yeah, last month, that was, yes, that's, that's in there. It should be.
It's in there.
Yeah.
Need a motion to.
Okay, but no further discussion in the executive session for it?
Nope.
Not for these, no?
Not for these. This is what we discussed last month. So then we vote on it this month.
Great. So I move item 12.7 under education.
So we already, um, did you, did you move it?
No.
You didn't?
That's mine.
Okay.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you for the second. Any discussion? Actually, shouldn't be any, so roll call please.
Mr. Sotovic?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Rokano?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Okay, there are no hand carries for education, so we can move on to personnel. Mrs. Rokano?
I'd like to move items 14.1 through 14.26 under personnel.
Second.
Any discussion?
No. Well, I first just want to make a comment on the retirement that is on the agenda. I would like to make you all aware that Mrs. Gabrielle has given 25 years of service to the West Milford School District. Congratulations on your upcoming retirement, and we wish you all the best in your next chapter.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Is, with the agenda now, there were supposed to be motions where, where we're supposed to abstain, and supposed to automatically be doing that? Is that happening yet, or is it because we have to be aware?
It's an opposite finance, right?
Yes, so, so that's an opposite finance. So it's for the routine items and.
But not for the other?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion, Mr. Dwyer?
I'd just like to make a comment that, looking at this agenda on this particular section that we're in, math night, math night, there's a night, but there's a night. It's fantastic. So I know, Ben, you have a lot of that. I know these are very popular, but that's cool. Sorry, gotta show you that.
And mostly great funded.
Even better. I like that. I'm gonna Terry for that one. Now, if I could do one Terry thing, say, I've got another question here real quick. Just out of curiosity, when we hire substitutes and substitute teachers, substitute needs, substitute, whatever. substitute teachers, substitute aides, substitute whatever, the process to find these, you mentioned earlier, Dan, that there's a a minimum number of credits they need, the college credits, like if I was a, let's say, a sophomore or high schooler, college student, and I had
30.
30 credits and I was over 80.
Was 60, yeah. They adjusted it.
Now, are we grabbing these kids just because they're available and they're willing to do it, or they go through, obviously, they go through some sort of...
So you have to become county sub-certified, um, and then once you have that certification, you can apply to be a sub in our district. Uh, they do then go through an interview with one of our administrators to determine if they're an appropriate fit for our school, um, and if there's a need, right? If we don't have a need, theoretically, we wouldn't be bringing in more subs, although we're pretty much always looking for subs, so we want to make sure that we are, uh, you know, bringing in the right people to, uh, to put in front of our students. Um, so there, you know, there's a wide variety of reasons that we might feel someone wasn't an appropriate fit, but for the most part, you know, we're going through this, an interview process as we ordinarily would. Um, and because those are as-needed positions, um, having more subs isn't necessarily costing more money because we're just filling the the positions that we need to, uh, to go through. So again, it used to be 60 college credits. Um, schools were having more and more trouble, especially during the pandemic, filling those roles, so it was reduced to 30. Um, so while that's not necessarily a focus of the Highlander Pathway, it's an added bonus that that when you are a future educator, for you to be able to take that step, because often future educators are choosing to, um, to begin substitute teaching because it gets them some of those, um, some of that experience in the classroom that they'd be seeking out to build their resume. We just happen to be able to offer the opportunity to people to gain all of your prerequisite skills, um, to get that certification during that pathway, so that's an exciting added bonus. Wasn't necessarily the focus, but it's an added bonus to that.
Any other discussion? Seeing non-rule call please, Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Stovitch?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
I abstain from 14.20, and yes to the rest.
Uh, Mrs. Riconna?
Yes.
And Mrs. Van Dyke?
I abstain from 14.20 and yes to the rest.
Thank you.
And we have no hand carries for personnel, so Operations and Finance, Mr. Lippi?
I'd like to move for your consideration, excuse me, Operations and Finance, 16.1 through 16.10.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, here you'll note for us 16.5 now for payroll, the recommended abstentions are Mrs. Markward and Mrs. Van Dyke.
If you refresh it, well, that was the, because they removed, well, that was where the settlement was, so if you refresh, that'll be there.
Breathe it out. Okay.
I helped him.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Dyke.
Just letting you all know.
Any other discussion? Seeing non-rule call please, Mr. Schultz?
I'm sorry, who made the second on that? I'm just trying to get caught up. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, Mr. Stovitch?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
So I abstain from 16.5 and yes to the rest.
Mrs. Riconna?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Okay, I abstain on 16.5 and yes to the rest.
And I think...
Do I not have to do that anymore?
Well, I think you could just say with recommended abstentions, because the recommended abstentions are in, you don't even have to specify. And to speak to that, because you had the question, um, all of the routine abstentions will be in there, so you can just say yes with abstentions. Um, the ones that are more specific to an individual, we don't, we don't want the board office to have to go identify all of those because some will get missed. So it's the routine ones like the payroll, or in the spring when it's contracts, things like that, there will be recommended abstentions. Um, and then you can just say yes with abstentions, and then the recommended abstention tool.
I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Yep, absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Kitchen. And there are no hand carries for Ops and Finance, so Policy, Mrs. Markward?
I would like to make a motion to move items two and three under Policy, all the numbering change after we refresh. There's no points now either.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Mrs. Stovitch.
I'd like to thank Dr. Reza for raising the, uh, Policy 5350 to the committee's attention. The title being Student Suicide Prevention. This is something that is obviously very serious, and during the times of a youth life, precious moments require a lot of hands-on work at the moment of a crisis, so uh, strengthening that policy and bringing more to that regulation as well was really important, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stovitch. Anyone else?
I just wanted to say, uh, thank you to the staff that took the time. We participated in a number of events, professional development throughout the course of the year, did a lot of research. So I want to recognize the staff that also contributed to the movement to update this policy, so thank you. I thank them.
Any other discussion? Seeing non-rule call please, Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Stovitch?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
Yes.
Mrs. Riconna?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Okay, we have no hand carries, um, for Policy. So, um, Committee Reports. Parks and Rec, Mrs. Dwyer, and Mr. Carino. Oh, actually, you wanted to, there was something else on there, right?
Yeah, if you, if we can skip ahead to old business real quick, I'll just, because I wanted to just discuss this, so I might as well do it before we give the reports. Um, so under Old Business, you'll see, we've just got the discussion of these Committee Liaison Reports. I know we've spoken about the way we plan to do these going forward, and you should have all now received a, uh, screencast video from me in last week's update that demonstrated for you how to go put that information in. We haven't shifted to it yet. You just have access to know what it's going to look like. Starting in the March meeting, we won't have to go through report by report.
So I'm just going to stop you right there, Dr. Kitchen, because we didn't get an update last week.
It was from, it was, it was the update from, not, not Friday, from, from the week prior.
February 7?
Yeah, and it came, and it came in an email to each of you. There's a video that you received. It's a screencast video that shows you how to navigate the, um, it showed how to navigate the committees in Board Docs, and it also demonstrated how to access and edit anything in the Committee Liaison Reports. So, um, while we haven't shifted to that yet, the, um, you now have the information available to you to go back and reference on how you would enter your reports. Um, we want to do that right out of the gate with the very first meeting after you got the info, just in case people had any issues. Um, but the, um, but again, for the next meeting, these Committee Liaison Reports will go in through Board Docs, then we'll get attached to the agenda. So if anybody has any questions, again, view the video. If you have any questions after you view the video, you can just reach out to me and I'll help walk you through it.
Thank you, Dr. Kitchen. So back to Committee Reports, Parks and Recs, Mrs. Dwyer and Mr. Carino.
There will be a meeting Thursday night.
Thank you, Mrs. Dwyer. Safety, Mrs. Riconna and Mrs. Dwyer.
Um, our next meeting is in March.
Terry, do we have a date?
I'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's Roundtable, Mrs. Van Dyke and Mrs. Riconna?
Uh, we had our meeting on 2/13. Um, some items raised by the, um, group, uh, they were wondering how um, feedback about shifting the elementary school conferences to January went. Um, survey that sent, went to staff, um, was about 50-50 feedback on whether to keep them in January or, um, change them to another time. And then a survey will be going out to parents for feedback, and once all of the responses are, um, reviewed, a decision will be made on what's, um, going to happen moving forward. Um, the group was wondering, um, if there is a police presence at all schools, and if not, could there be? Um, Dr. Kitchen, um, informed them that we have one SRO, um, in district. They are stationed here um, on the main campus with the high school, middle school, Highlander Academy, the board office, transportation. Um, however, um, um, after we had the state police do the tour, they said we're absolutely in compliance. Um, they offered some suggestions on security, but overall, as a district, we are, um, happy with the procedures we have in place.
And we have a strong police presence at the buildings. They spend a fair amount of time at the buildings. They're just not, there just isn't an SRO for each building, because that runs through the police department.
Um, they had a question about vacant positions, um, specifically the Macapin STEM teacher and high school chemistry teacher. Um, the STEM teacher is going to be filled by, um, someone who is already, um, substituting in Macapin through SWING. Um, they're certified to teach STEM, and they'll be teaching STEM um, at Macapin with the guidance of Dr. Belzer, um, and support. Um, there are interviews for the chemistry replacement occurring, and hopefully we have someone consistent in the position until we find a permanent, um, solution. And then, um, lastly, it's about the, uh, retirement of the high school media specialist. Um, interviews are ongoing, um, for our replacement, and, um, the district is still trying to figure out what that position is going to be moving forward. Um, we followed up about the LICE policy, which Dr. Kitchen gave us an in-depth, um, last month, he gave us an in-depth, um, resolution to that where basically, um, we are doing what we should be doing, and we can't give out any further information. And that is all.
Thank you, Mrs. Riconna. Um, the State County School Boards Association, myself and Mrs. Van Dyke, I do have, I, maybe you?
Well, I just want, I just want to mention that the Unsung Heroes Awards are coming up on March 10.
Yep.
And that's going to be held at Manchester Regional High School. I will be attending. I, I, I encourage others to come because it's a great night. Mrs. Lockwood and I did it last year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think, were, were you there too, Dan, last year? And so was Matt from the high school.
And Mrs. Lambert.
And Mrs. Lambert, and I do think it's a great night to be out to see, you know, that these are, these are a lot of students who normally don't get recognized, and I, it was, it was a really, it was a great night, and I encourage any of you, I think, since it is an awards thing, I think we can attend.
And we have a, I, I've got a pretty good response, not just from the board, but also from, um, individuals at the high school.
Good, good.
So we should have good representation at the event.
Perfect. So I wanted to just mention that.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Dyke. That's exactly what I was going to say also. Uh, New Jersey School Boards Association, Mr. Stovitch?
And myself?
There is no report for that. Uh, there are webinars that are on the website and ongoing, and some are based on budgeting, so it's well worth watching those types of things and bleeding into legislative. There's just hopes and dreams at the moment in legislation.
Very well put. Technology Oversight, Mrs. Markward and Mr. Lippi?
Nothing, but we would love to have something.
Yeah. Well, we got to support that.
Yes.
Township Board of Education Joint Committee, any update, uh, Mr. Schultz?
Uh, the update I have is, uh, Mr. Glenn and I met with Field Turf last week, and I'm working with the township to get a date. I'll probably talk to everyone after the meeting, if we're on the committee, to try to get a date that we could all get together.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Uh, Municipal Alliance, Mrs. Van Dyke?
I was not able to attend the Municipal Alliance because we had changed our committee minutes uh, this past week. However, I, I think you all received an email from Mrs. O'Brien about, um, raising resilient youth in challenging times, which coincide with your suicide prevention, which is a great, uh, great pamphlet. That's going, it's, it's going to happen on Wednesday, February, um, 26th at, um, and there's a sign on for everybody. I would encourage if any, you know, if any of you could give it out, it would be great, because I, I do know that they, I feel like they did this one other time, like maybe last year, and it was a very well-received webinar, so I encourage, especially in these times, okay?
Thank you, Mrs. Van Dyke. Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, Mrs. Markward?
So our next meeting is March 12th at 7:00 PM, uh, and it will be held at Ashua.
Elementary school.
So tour continues?
Yes, we are, we are touring all throughout West Milford.
Thank you. Okay. Old Business, um, I know we just spoke about the committee reports that are on there. Um, any other old business?
Move to close old business.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? New business? Any new business?
Oh, wait.
Yes, Mrs. Stovitch?
It'll be a quick blurb. So I went on about the audit. Now, to the budget books. There is something that I do recommend that we take into consideration, and that's the memorandum by our business administrator. Um, each and every year, we get a budget book that's in it by the business administrator, and once you read it, read it again, because it has a really great outlook in case as to how the administration is budgeting, and it's very crucial for our discussions coming up. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Stovitch. Any other new business?
Move to close new business.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comments. Anyone wishing to speak?
Move to close public comments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Executive Session.
Are we going to adjourn? We're going to adjourn.
At 8:49 PM, I move to go into Executive Session um, for the purpose of discussing personal appointments, resignations, current litigation matters, special education matters negotiations, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The Executive Session Minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable. The board will be in Executive Session for approximately 20 minutes. Um, action will not be taken, and we will adjourn from Executive Session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We will be adjourned from Exec.